Good evening, all. This is the April 12th meeting of the school committee. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if everybody who can would rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands.
To the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you all who are here tonight and anybody at home who is watching. Our -- thank you. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. The next item is superintendent's report and assistant superintendent report and director of finance report. Then the school committee members' report, building project update, citizens' requests, student services update, a recognition set for Joanna DeCarlo and Casey Cullen, emergency sheltering update, and if needed, an executive session, after which we would come out of executive session and immediately adjourn. So with that, is there a motion to approve the minutes of March 29th, 2023, regular session?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
Sure, I can second.
Very good. Any discussion? Seeing none and hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. The vote is five to zero to zero. Moving on, superintendent's report.
Thank you. It's good to see all of you. I'm enjoying that it's still light outside.
And warm.
And warm. And we're going to try to meet our goal of, I believe, tonight's meeting is shorter. It's coming into a vacation week. My highlights really center on just a couple key pieces that as we get ready to head into vacation, there's always a sense of emotional energy that ramps up in buildings. And so that's both really fabulous and then also requires lots of building management. So the week has been busy and enjoyable. It's got a lot of MCAS work going on across the district. I just want to give a shout out to the technology team. We had a couple people, I got two emails questioning from parents just concerned that MCAS was falling on some of the celebrations of different families, both Passover and Ramadan and Easter, and that was happening in the same time. I wrote a respectful email back acknowledging, we see that, we know that, that when we're working on the MCAS schedule, we have a very finite tech team and all of the district has to be online to do that test. And so we have to rotate them through to testing sites. And we have to set up a pretty complex schedule within the window of what both the state gives us for MCAS and then also what we can manage with our tech team. I think the families that had reached out to me kind of acknowledged and understood that. I just think it's important to be on record to say, like, we, we respect the importance of people's celebrations during holidays and we want to provide the time and space for that. And recognizing that we also then have to keep the targets of the district moving forward. And with vacation week next week, like, these are very tight windows for all of us. I just want to be on record as saying we're sorry when all of those things come into a place where they in any way inhibit family time. We do know that families can select personally to have their child do the makeup session if they keep them home, if they were up late. And those are things that people should exercise. My other notation was just at Spirit Week at the high school, and Aratrica might highlight that. I'm sure she has a range of things that she'll talk about. The spring sports season is underway and it's been a really productive week. So everyone's looking forward to vacation, of course. I think there's a sense of positive work energy on the ground with both students and faculty trying to get a lot done before we head out and then knowing when we come back, we want to buckle down and really make the most of the stretch between the return from break all the way through to close. Really maximizing that learning block through May becomes something we start really focusing on. So I feel like things look really good at the building level and I'm also looking forward to some vacation. I will turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. Daniel?
Good evening. Nothing to report tonight.
There you go. Just kind of oozing into vacation. Dan, excuse me, David?
Nothing to report tonight as well.
Oh, another one. That's a good idea. Okay. School committee member report. So should we start with Arastrika, please?
So for my report, I want to start off by thanking Mrs. Bach and Dr. Stevens for a really productive conversation that we had earlier about the guidance department and hopefully some meaningful changes, you know, looking forward. I was just really happy to have the opportunity to kind of express some concerns from our student body and I think that it'll be really a good improvement moving forward. Another thing that I wanted to talk about is that we recently had our NHS induction ceremony as well as our first meeting with all of the new inductees. And this was one of the largest classes of the inductees, showing that both academic and civic performance has been really high at WHS recently. So that's been really nice to see. Also, this past Saturday, the Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives did have a conference where we were able to, you know, support initiatives such as free lunch for all students, which is a piece of legislation that might recently pass. So that would impact our school district as well, but that is something that the statewide organization has announced support for overall. Additionally, at WHS, we have the school play coming up, April 29th, Guys and Dolls. There's posters literally everywhere, so you cannot miss it. This week is also Spirit Week, ending this Friday with Competition Day.
That's my --
Which I'm a senior and I never, so like, I heard about it freshman year, but we've never able to really do it because of COVID. So super excited for Competition Day, looking forward to that this Friday. And lastly, just a few things to prepare for the end of the year. AP tests are coming up the first and second week of May and teachers will be distributing Google Forms for students to indicate when they're taking their tests. And the last day of school for seniors is May 26th. Thank you.
Yakub?
Yes, just a short report from my side. We continued, last week, we continued our tour of the schools. We toured the high school, Sarah, me and Amber, and it was great. I can, I can see why it's called the crown jewel of our schools. We will continue hopefully next week or not next week, the week after, with the next school. And the other one that I want to report was, I met with Peter Dambek, the chair of the Sustainable Westboro. So, and I'm going to be joining the meeting tonight. Hopefully we'll have more to report next time. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And Lady?
Yes, thank you. I just want to acknowledge that a group of students gathered together on last Saturday and sorted bags of clothes and toys that were collected at all of the schools. It was organized by Project 351 representatives from the middle school and high school. And lots of students showed up to get their volunteer hours and helped sort out many, many bags of clothes. And they're all being donated to Cradle to Crayons. So congratulations to everyone who helped out with that.
Very good. Steve?
Yeah, I want to announce again that this Saturday at 11:00 AM at Hastings School, the Westboro CPAC is hosting our second annual sensory friendly day, which includes the, the entire municipal departments from town will turn out with all of their gear, including the fire department, police department, all of them with tractors. There will be vendors there. So last year, we had a wonderful turnout. So we're looking forward to having a really nice event again. And it's at 11 at Hastings School. Hope to see you there.
Very good. Sarah?
I pretty much have the same update as Yakub. We got to visit the high school last week, which was super fun. I've got two high schoolers, so I got to bump into them in the hallways and see them in their classes, which was super exciting for them and their friends. So, and it was, it was so much fun to see what the kids are engaging in and all the, especially seeing the specials and the different opportunities they have, the different classes that are offered to them as electives. That, that was really, really nice. Additionally, I had met with Dave Gordon, I believe that was the week before last, and we had discussed about the buses and NRT. And he sort of brought me up to speed as to what's happening over there. And we hope to be able to make, you know, additional improvements where, where is needed. And also, thank you so much for this chocolate. It looks amazing. I am fasting, but I will, I look forward to enjoying it when I break my fast. So thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you. I don't have a report for the school committee, but I can comment on the building project update. Our solar consultant visited Fails last week and we found a few glitches that he was able to, to remedy. We tracked the solar edge meter, which is the, it's not a revenue meter like the meters that are offered by National Grid, but it's reasonably accurate so that we know using the solar edge meter, what our solar generation is total, how much energy is being consumed by the school, and how much we're discharging or sending out into the, into the network. And we were able to coordinate that information with the information that we were seeing on the National Grid meters, both the solar meter itself for generation and the, the digital meter associated with the recording of energy supplied and received by National Grid. As a result of his visit, we found two panels that had failed and they were replaced. The replacement panels came out of what's called attic stock. We have extra panels that were purchased to allow us to replace them in kind. And I have talked to Vertex about getting them replaced under the warranty. The argument is they're out of warranty, but since we knew about these dead panels a long time ago and had reported them, we believe that we're owed a replacement panels. In addition to that, you may recall in the last meeting, we talked about the town meeting vote relative to the roofing at Hastings as well as the work at Mill Pond. And so as a result of that, those two projects are moving forward in the process by which we will get first the engineering completed and then go out to bid a second time on Hastings. And we're going to separate the projects so that we should be able to award at least one of them, one of the two pieces of Hastings when we go forward. So, and I mixed up three things there. The roof is one project, the Hastings project relative to the ADA as well as the HVAC update. So those, those three at Hastings are in motion in their own, in their own way based on the outcome of town meeting. So with that, is there anyone here for citizens' requests? Seeing none, we'll move forward then.
Great. So one of the things that's an important part of the close of the year through the next several meetings that we have between now and your summer respite from the responsibilities of meetings for school committee is that you get end of year reports which give you a picture of the implementation of the budget that we built and the programs that it then fulfills. And you get an opportunity to really think about the umbrella of the work that different departments provide to the district. So Sheri Stevens, Dr. Sheri Stevens is here to report tonight and she brought Karen Bunton with her, who is our homeless liaison and out of district coordinator and director, coordinator, supporter of the borough. She's got endless hats. So I'm not sure which one she's wearing tonight, but Sheri brought her because she covers at least three. So we're going to have them join us at the table and remind you that, you know, the, the student service budget, you know, covers about 26% of our operational budget and staffing. And so I think it's really important to get a picture of what that is annually and its implementation. So welcome. And I will say that these are two colleagues that I appreciate immensely and the work they bring to this district. And a shout out to the quality of time and emotional energy it takes to oversee student services and the range of complexity of supports. And I'll turn it over to the two of them.
Thank you, Amber. As always, it's truly a pleasure for me to be with you this evening and to share the fine work of the department and often like challenging work, but with a really amazing team of people, which you'll hear more about. And I do appreciate my good colleague Karen being here tonight. She does all of the other as assigned, like, in an amazing way. So I feel so fortunate to have a strong colleague. And I also want to welcome Yakub and Sarah. It's so nice to be here with you and welcome you to the committee. And as I always begin, I just want to share my heartfelt appreciation to the committee, to the community and to the amazing team that I work with here in the Westboro Public Schools. So thank you. In terms of tonight's update, we'll cover several topics. We'll talk a little bit about special education data. We'll look at our out of district enrollment, which was prominent discussion in the fall. So Karen will give you a nice update on that. She'll also touch on our homelessness and transportation, which has been pushing on her agenda this year. So we'll hear a little bit about that. And then we'll move into some other facets of the department, you know, that center around mental health and social emotional learning and wellness and sort of our core programming and best practices models. So in terms of the transition slide, this quote, IEPs and 504s are the antithesis of design. They represent the shortcomings of the model and not the child, is a parent quote that I've adopted. It really resonated with me during a very difficult period in public education. And I think that it really parallels and mirrors well the kind of model that we want to have in student services. Because we spend a lot of times in meetings and we spend a lot of time making sure that we design really well crafted plans and that, you know, there's legal entitlement. But I think when we shift our mindset and we shift our thinking, we think about the model, like, that's the excitement of the work that we do. So in terms of the special education student percentages, which I share with you each and every year, you can see our enrollment hovers just under 4,000 students. For students on IEPs, we have 640, which seems like our consistent number every year. I always say to Lisa Boyer, are you sure it hasn't changed? No. And it's like 640. So we're very consistent and we can talk about whether that's a good thing or not. And then you can see our state percentages as well. You can see the state is at 19.4 and comparatively we're at 16.3, which puts us down a little bit from prior years and perhaps, in my opinion, still not enough. But anyway, we're three percentage points below. We can see as we look at our comparative districts and we're really looking at, you know, our closest neighbors and friends that kind of mirror, parallel who we are, that in some, you know, 11 of the 16 districts have increased their special education percentages in, in the last year by at least one percentage point. Again, we've remained the same. And, you know, I, I can't really go further in terms of the why. There's so many factors that go into, to this type of data. And I still just want to recognize that, you know, we're moving into the post-COVID period as well. So I think overall, you know, things look pretty good comparatively speaking. And then I, again, I always go back to Dr. Thomas Hare and his work that he did with us up close just shortly before his passing around inclusive practices and some of the mindset and model shifts that we've been working really hard on. And, you know, he, when he visited, he said, hmm, you know, I think like Westboro could do better and maybe, you know, you would hover around 12%, honestly. So, you know, that just continues to set the bar and the goals for the work that we need to do. As we shift into looking at disability categories for current students on IEPs, we also have a three-year data table here that you can see. In terms of autism, we remain fairly stable at 20%. We see minor decrease in communication at around 12%. Developmental delay feels pretty stable at 8%. And we can also notice a shift in our emotional disability category. I think again, since post-COVID, you know, it's, it's down to 11%. And then we see increases in health, you know, at 13, but pretty much on par if, if we do the look back to the 2020, 21 school year. Multiple disabilities at 2%, neurological nine, intellectual two. Specific learning still at, you know, a higher percentage of 22. And again, you know, we're in the process of really strong implementation with the new phonics program and, you know, beginning to look at how we will progress monitor and expect the efficacy of that work to play out over time. And then in terms of our sensory, which includes vision, deaf or hard of hearing students, we're at about 2%. So you can kind of look at those trends. The next slide really takes into consideration the student services team as a whole, which is an incredible celebration. And I don't, I'm sure, like, I haven't brought it forth in the past and I need to do it moving forward. But I would just say through the whole COVID movement until now, like, they are a very robust and dynamic team. They're very flexible thinkers. There are 230 of them within the student services department and each individual contributes incredible work to make up the whole of the team. And across the team, we have a variety of special educators with varying licensers. We have a teacher of the visually impaired, which is a really challenging professional that is well sought after by other districts at this point. We have our paraeducators, which incredibly skilled and talented and continue to like raise the bar for not only themselves, but for our students each and every year, complemented by schools psychologists and counselors and speech language pathologists and occupational therapists and one physical therapist who services the entire district. We have a team of board certified behavior analysts who really work across the schools and really have changed their mindset in terms of flexibly moving into classrooms and, and taking caseloads of students. And then our nurses and our student services coordinators, which are school-based, and then myself as the director. So we, again, have been very stable as a team hovering right around the 230 for sort of the four-year look back. And when we need to, and the service delivery drives, you know, who represents the team, we very flexibly like change or move staff from school to school, or we might collapse paraeducators to get different professionals that we might need. I would say that they're very invested and involved in professional development and they receive and they also give it. They're very instrumental in giving us good feedback about what they need. And this year, we also have, you know, that we're always growing new leadership within the organization and we have three professionals who are seeking their administrative licensure. So it's been kind of fun to watch their programs progress and to, to help with that mentorship. So again, we have, as Amber mentioned, we, we do consume 26% of the budget and we never lose sight of that in terms of doing what we need to do to provide services for students while being cognizant of, of what that represents relative to the larger budget. And we do have federal entitlement grants that also help supplement when we need positions or we need to shift or we need to contract with an outside professional that we may not have. Well, transition now to talk a little bit about out of district and homelessness and transportation. So I'll shift the presentation to Karen.
Okay. So again, what we're here looking at is kind of over the course of the last three years. And I think most notably, what you'll see is there have been some kind of notable shifts in terms of who our students are that are being placed out of district. We, one of the notable shifts is we are placing less students with autism in out of district placements. And notably as well, a slight reduction as well as students needing to be placed out of district who are carrying the category of emotional and typically needing therapeutic placements. Another area of shift in the other direction is we are seeing more students with either multiple disabilities or students who are qualifying under the neurological profile that are needing to be placed out. And some of that may also account for what I'll speak to in a few minutes are some, we had some pretty, what I would call unusual ebbs and flows of our out of district population this year that are not common for us on an annual basis. Something to note in terms of the disability category of sensory and deaf and hard and hearing is that that is a disability category that commonly, an entire family, meaning all siblings in that family, may be deaf or hard of hearing. And so in our case, we have, we started the school year across two families with seven kids just between the two families. So one of those families happened to exit town and that can cause a dramatic shift in one direction or the other. So that's unusual compared to the other disability categories. And I just wanted to make sure that is noted because it's common for us to have several siblings under that disability category. In terms of enrollment shifts, we started on July 1. We had 41 students out of district. We sit today at 37. 33 of those students are in day placements and four of them are in residential. The residential placements were all carryovers. We'll have two that will age out by June 30th and another one that we will end fiscal responsibility. So that will be a pretty dramatic shift in students that we have in residential placement. The other piece that really impacted our numbers this year as well is we had a lot of unusual move in situations and a lot of unexpected exit situations. We had the entry of an immediate cost share. We had the entry of one student that we actually did, you know, place out of district. We had, we acquired fiscal responsibility for a foster student, so that was something that was unanticipated. We also had to, we had a move in that we needed to immediately place an out of district due to the complexity of his educational needs and that needing to be how we supported that student. So those are some unusual conditions for us. We don't typically see all of that in one school year. Equal to that, we also don't see the kinds of exits we had this year in our out of district population. We had seven unanticipated exits from students that were in out of district in my 10 school years in Westboro. Never have we seen that. And so three of those, though, again, we remain fiscally responsible for until the end of the school year. And four of them happen to result in immediate fiscal end due to various reasons that surround our fiscal responsibility. So those are some pretty unusual features that absolutely ebbed and flowed our numbers in terms of the course of the school year. In addition to that, we're continuing to face a very real and significant, I'm going to use the word barrier because it feels that way to me anyway. When we do have a student that we do believe needs a level of services that are beyond what we can provide in district, we're often looking to those out of district placements and they have been hit quite hard across the board with staffing challenges. And what that's resulted in is them not being able to accept our students. And what that's resulted in is them not being able to accept our students and possibly not even accepting referrals or having significant delays. We have a student, as an example, who wasn't accepted into an out-of-district placement back in November and we are still waiting for a start date. And that has real impacts, not just on the student but on our in-district programming because when we come to that decision that a student warrants more than we can provide in district, we have exhausted, you know, all of our, you know, expertise, our resources. And so to have to go six additional months, meeting the needs of that student can be a pretty complex situation to be in. So those are, those are kind of some of the most significant impacts in terms of looking at out-of-district for this year. I won't really talk much more about it because I know it's been previewed with you that we are, as a district, facing, starting July 1, an up to 14% increase across the board that the state had made a decision to do with our out-of-district placements. That certainly will have its impact on us for sure. So, in moving into kind of the next area around homelessness, I don't think I'm going to talk too deep about that in this conversation simply because I know it's an agenda item further down for us to talk about the forthcoming shelter. And a lot of the conversation around that, it's interconnected with where we are. But other than to say, which I think at this point is not new information for you folks, is that we have seen a substantial increase. We have four extended stay model hotels here in town and three of which are being used by the Department of Housing and Community Development to place families in using the hotels for emergency sheltering. And this has, you know, significantly impacted the number of students that we're supporting in district who are residing in hotels. And it's also further impacted our existing resources in district as these students often come with complex needs or come with other needs that are pushing on our both special education and L services. And so, again, I won't touch too much on that because we're going to have that as a larger conversation in a bit. So, kind of transitioning to, you know, a conversation that, as most of my colleagues can attest to, makes me twitch at this point, is the complexity of transportation this year. I think everyone is well aware at this point that transportation continues to be a problem simply because there is a really significant driver shortage. And that driver shortage is resulting in us having pervasive challenges through this year with little to no progress in terms of them being resolved by our outside transportation supports and resources, is that we are struggling to get our students rooted within, in special education transportation, there is a requirement that a student not be on a bus longer than an hour without team approval. So the standard has always typically been to create routes that are within that timeframe. And that has been almost impossible to share in many cases. That then impacts, we have 27 students that we are transporting to out-of-district placements. We have students, five of which have been waitlisted virtually almost this entire school year to receive either any transportation or what we would call to be appropriate transportation, meaning within that hour timeframe. Or appropriate meaning that they are able to access the full breadth of their school day, meaning they've been provided a bus that will get them to school on time and pick them up on time. We have had students that have not been able to achieve that this year. Students that are missing and coming to their school later or having to depart earlier simply to get their transportation needs met. I'm sure, as you can all understand, when we're transporting out-of-district students, they can come with complexity. That is why they're out of district and that complexity doesn't just go away for the bus ride to and from school. So that has resulted in having to create some of these alternate times and alternate routes. It's also required us to have to go outside of some of our traditional ways in which we're routing students by way of our transportation contract, simply to find a transportation company that will do that route so that we can ensure that our student is accessing their school. And that has resulted, in some cases, having to pay significantly more for transportation than we would have otherwise, simply because that company was able to say yes and provide that routing. In addition to that, we've had to call on our parents, who they have been immensely supportive and gracious about having to, in some cases, handle the transportation to or from school for their child. That is not always feasible for our families. Geography's not often on our side here with the out-of-district placements. They're not necessarily on the parent's way to work or close by where they can scoot to the school, drop off, and then come back. So it is a hardship for our families to be asked to have to do that. And we are incredibly grateful for the collaboration that we have received around that. So that's kind of under the umbrella of special education transportation because the other facet of transportation that we serve as a district is under our, what we call McKinny-Vento, our homeless transportation. And in short, we are responsible for any Westboro Public School student that may have to enter into homelessness and subsequently reside in another community. And we're also responsible for cost-sharing transportation if there is a student that has been placed here in Westboro in a shelter situation and needs to be transported back to what's called their school of origin, so the school they were attending before entering into homelessness. And so McKinny-Vento, again, this year has been complex because there have been times where we haven't been able to get routing for students. And in some cases, that has impacted and increased the number of students we've had to register as students that need to now attend Westboro Public Schools because they simply cannot get a bus to keep them in their school of origin. The reason the school of origin exists is kind of probably obvious to you, but it's intended to help keep a student's education and their connection to their home school stabilized when they're entering into an otherwise destabilizing situation when they're losing their home. So then to have the challenge of not being able to get busing on top of that is heartbreaking, frankly, you know, because it's further destabilizing the student. Not only have they left their home that they were in, now they're also having to leave their school and friends and supports. And so not being able to access transportation, you know, is impactful. In addition to that, we have been significantly impacted by the cost-share relationships that we're required to enter into. You know, we've had a steady flow of bills that are coming in from other districts sharing in the cost of transporting. Some of that has been the direct impact by the students that we have been welcoming, you know, in from the DHCD, who's been placing them in the three hotels. But that has been a significant financial impact on us for sure because those can't be planned for. Where you're never sure who's going to be placed. You're never sure how many of those students are going to need transport back to their school of origin. So we've really just had to respond to those very much in real time. In terms of, I think that's really kind of, you know, again, without diving because we're going to have it as a later conversation around sort of our homelessness impact and the numbers and the way in which, you know, transportation is something that is sadly the first thing on my mind almost every morning and the last thing that tends to be on my mind every night because we are continuing. It's a daily event. There's probably not a day that I'm not on the phone with a family trying to continue to build trust with them that we're working on this and we're going to resolve it. And it maybe won't always be this way, but it's been incredibly impactful to not see any forward progress throughout the school year with the driver shortage and subsequently these companies being able to provide, you know, on our behalf, so.
Thank you, Karen. I really appreciate the impact of your work this year. So I know it's definitely shifted, so thank you for that update. I'm going to move us along now and we'll transition to talk a little bit. It's really like a 100-foot view from where I sit for, to spend a little bit of time with social, emotional learning and mental health and wellness. And I just want to also give a shout out to Roger Anderson, our Wellness Director, and Kim Tyne, our Coordinator of Social, Emotional Learning and Mental Health, who really are on the ground doing this work with our teams and our students every day. Special thanks to them. We'll spend just a few moments looking at our multi-tiered system of support. And this is really a framework for how school districts can build the necessary systems to ensure that each and every student receives a high-quality and equitable education experience. It is really designed to support schools with proactively identifying and addressing the strengths and needs of all students by really optimizing data, using data-driven decision-making, progress monitoring, and evidence-based practices and strategies to increase the intensity and to sustain student growth. So it's brought to us by the Department of Education. And you can see sort of a depiction here that Kim and Roger put together for me around where we are. And you can see universal design sort of at the top and center with, like, all of the drivers around this concentric circle of work, really that lead to competency and implementation and leadership. And then we have our actual tiers of access. So we have our Tier One, which is really the universal support that students receive in general education. And again, dynamic teams of staff across the district, pre-K to 12+, really fold in to the design of the learning plan. And we'll talk about more of that as we get into UDL as a concept and a framework. We have Tier Two, where students can access more designed interventions and supports for them. And then Tier Three, which is our most intensive students that are on IEPs and how they access. So again, it's, you know, it's the things that we're known for having a rigorous academic curriculum for making sure that we have really robust Tier One instruction in the general education classroom, that all of our departments fold in to the work and that we're creating a school, community, culture, and climate that supports all of the student needs that make it equitable for them to be whole students and proud graduates of Westboro Public Schools.
And before she moves off that slide, just to reiterate earlier, she spoke, Sherry spoke about Dr. Hare and his view that, you know, a strong, high-achieving district can keep its students who require the delineation of a robust IEP or 504 interventions that require that whole other tier, you know, hovering closer to around 12% when the classroom instruction is strong and differentiated and there's layers of support in the daily academic experiences that kids get as they move through their normal experience. And that in a classroom that believes that all children belong and that all children can and should have access to what is the typical, most inclusive, least restrictive experience, that we can provide a dynamic classroom and kids can thrive. So that as the classroom becomes more flexible and there's more tiers of support built into that time, you don't require that in order to get more beyond that, that's really, should be a smaller subset of students who require more. So we've added so much into the classroom layering. Want to see that responsiveness happen in terms of people feeling like, I don't need to have an IEP because I'm getting what I need in the classroom to grow and to thrive. And so that really is the heart of that work.
So as we talk generally tonight about social, emotional learning support, something that Kim and I talk about a lot is sort of the soft skills that we are able to help students acquire in the trajectory of their work with us that make them successful when they leave us, not only at the university level, but when they enter the workforce as well. So you can see the skills here. I don't think any of them are surprising, but that's really when we're thinking about skill acquisition and instructional delivery, like, it's really touching on all of these pieces to make sure that, that students are, like, highly employable when they leave us as well. And this, some of the research that goes along with this comes from, like, the Future Jobs Report of 2020 and the World Economic Forum. And they also see that, you know, 80% of the work is centered on social, emotional learning that attributes to really success in the workforce. The next slide is really the emergence of our longitudinal data, which is a big celebration with the implementation of our universal screening. So what you can see here is two years now of data. And along, you know, this really drives our work and practices, just like in other areas of teaching and learning, we use this to really assess what students need from an intervention, from a support, from a counseling standpoint. So along the horizontal axis, we have the current grade and class of graduation date. The blue bars represent our most current universal screenings and the green, the latter. And these data really represent the beginnings of this data. As you can see, like, our students remain, you know, pretty stable, 84% or above in terms of the feedback that we're getting. And this information really provides us the support that we need to make sure that we are targeting and benefiting students with small group and sometimes individual instruction. Families who have children, you know, who may benefit from this level of support from our counselors, you know, would be notified and are involved in learning more about what students will be involved in and learning and acquiring supports, whether it be social skills group or psychoeducational groups, et cetera. So teachers do the screening in grades K through three and students do self-reporting assessments in grades four through eight. And, you know, selecting the right tools really matters so that we have consistency in our data and strong validity in our data over time. Last year, we screened grade nine. This year, grades nine and 11 with plans to expand at the high school for 10 and 12 coming up in the next school year. So that's really.
It feels good to see some minor progress in students' screening and feeling that our numbers are already very high. But again, you know, you're trying to find small groups of individuals that you want to pull out and provide those Tier Two supports that they're seen, they're heard, and they're supported. And so I'm pleased to see some of this early data. We talked last year when we brought this report forward and they gave their first indication of this data, you wanted us to make sure we were tracking. This is a request from the school committee that we're tracking our data, that we can have benchmarks to show that the screenings provide and that also that the tiered intervention support gives us a responsiveness. So here we are coming into that follow-up and, you know, we'll track this data and we'll learn together.
The next slide really represents, it's an example, a student sampling of what it would look like with a Tier Two, like, targeted support and progress monitoring plan in place. So this is actual data from a group of students who were screened with elevated depression or anxiety symptoms during our universal screening this fall. And you can see that seven students who participated along the first column and their respective scores indicating depression symptoms, anxiety, and then like a total score, the DAT. And then the first block really also depicts, you know, where we would go in terms of monitoring the student with interventions over the course of the eight-to-10-week period of intervention. So we, you know, can use the color-coded symptoms, system, excuse me, to kind of monitor where students are with progress. These seven students participated in a psychoeducation group with a school counselor for one period a week for the eight-to-10-week period. Every two weeks, the counselor would conduct progress monitoring, as is a best practice with all instruction and intervention. And as you can see, six of the seven students made progress during that time. You know, what you cannot see represented here is that although student five continues to experience high levels of distress, the student's anxiety did reduce during the course of participation in this group. And again, we would take that data and kind of cycle back to see what is the next level of intervention that we should or need to introduce to the student. So I feel like that's like a nice representation of the work as well, really moving into evidence-based practice to inform what we need to do to support our students at a higher level. We transition to sort of the final segment in my update for you tonight around best practices and core programming models. And as Daniel and Amber have been sharing throughout the year, we are fully immersed as a district in the universal design for learning, which we're really excited about it in terms it in terms of changing the mindset, in terms of moving and providing access for all learners at the restrictive level of least restrictive environment that they can be included in. Again, what you see in the center table is just sort of the tiered plan for UDL and what it represents. Planning is really essential, like planning has to occur with the individual student in mind, understanding their profiles, making sure that you have everyone that can contribute to the design of that child's learning involved in the planning process. So hence the immersion in PD this year, you know, with 10 hours of dedicated time with our faculty. We're just in the process of receiving feedback as we kind of debrief on the coursework. But it seems at this point extremely positive and very informative in terms of where we move the work in the year to come. But we, you know, we talk about access and representation, making sure the student can access and in different ways, the learning and instruction, that students have the ability to engage with content and concepts and that they have the ability to express their understanding in many different ways. The student voice is a strength of this model and they need to be able to also identify with their personal learning style and how they will share their story in Westboro Public Schools and beyond to be successful lifelong learners. And then it's kind of this reciprocal circle of reflection to really inform where we are with the practice and how we can continually. The last slide for this evening talks generally about the best practice models that we have in place and they're really flexible student-centered models. We have, as you know, our preschool, which is fully inclusive. We have Center for Student Success by Design at the Gibbons Middle School and High School, which really supports students who require hospitalization and need to come back to us and have a landing spot where they can go to class, but they can also get support both from a clinical standpoint and an academic standpoint as needed. It also supports students who have maybe been concussed, you know, on the athletic, during an athletic game. So it's really like a nice center and the team there is incredibly caring and strong. We also have a therapeutic model at the high school, the Stars Program, and we're moving that model into the development phase at Mill Pond and probably Gibbons next as we look at what the data is telling us about our students with emotional profiles. We still have a range of classrooms and while, you know, I think parents will say, Sherri, you talk all about the inclusion, like I don't want to negate that we also have very strong intensive programs where students with ASD and others can go and it's either a landing spot and they're included as they can access, but very strong program models. And then of course, you know, your sweet treat tonight from, from the Borough Program, which really has just been exceptional. And I would also give a shout out to Karen there because she works strongly with that team from a special ed perspective. And we have a whole new marketing campaign on our tuition and approach to get, you know, students from other districts to join us. That's looking pretty amazing. We also engage with a range of expert consultants. We've had a consulting psychiatrist on staff, I think, as long as I've been here, which is, is really great, and many others, you know, that really fold in to help complement the work that we want to do and to guide us along the way. Program evaluations are also key. And next year, we'll enter into a cycle where we'll be most likely looking at some of our more intensive programs and also therapeutic, working with an outside consultant. And Desi will be visiting next year and we are on target for our mid-cycle review. And they've also promised us a new IEP model that we'll learn more about next year and be rolling out in the fall of 2024. So again, it's my pleasure to be here this evening. I do again, just want to compliment the team as, you know, just talented professionals as a whole and certainly welcome any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you, Sherri. Questions? Go ahead.
I want to thank you so much for the, the work that you and your team do. I really appreciate the report that you've offered. I have, as CPAC Chair, I, I'll have some specific questions that we can, you know, talk about offline. I did have a question about one of the, the slides. It's just a particular question. If you could go back to the, the Tier Two Targeted Support and Progress Monitoring slide, what grade level of student was this? Or students, seven students? You said this is actual student collected data?
It is. And I'm, I'm going to guess at this, so Kim might text me and say it was different. I can certainly get it for you, but I'm thinking it was either middle or high school.
This is, this is, and they, so they see it as we see it, where it's color coded for them as well. This is what it appears, that they get to see this in sort of real time?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a great question. I'm not sure like what the actual visual, I know it's discussed with them and they're, you know, they can see sort of the trajectory of their growth. I don't know if it's presented in this format to them, but I can certainly get that answer.
When you say they, who you, who's the they?
The, the seven students that are, that are being represented.
I, I don't think the students are, are looking at their data. I think it's purely for the counselors.
So is this student-reported data?
Yes.
That students are-
Students answer, are answering questions that are like, right, they're, they're items on a scale to determine degree of, of concern on some different dimensions.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is at what level of self-regulation are the students seeing? Are, are they able to monitor themselves in real time?
Yeah, I think to speak to that too, I think when we look at this sampling, my understanding when we went through this is that these students screened in or offered support based upon how they were profiling. And that in the trajectory of the 68 weeks that they worked through the data cycle, the counselor who's working with them then does a data check with them and then rescores them and can talk about progress and growth with those students. And then this is the, the faculty member tracking the data so they can record it. And so they're both data progress monitoring on the work they're doing based upon the targeted skills and then tracking improvement. I think, I don't know, it'd be individual choice whether or not they're actually showing the student that screener, but they want them to understand they're making progress and that they can feel that that progress demonstrates that the skills they're working to develop are moving them forward. It's a strength-based model, which is very exciting.
Yeah, and so even if the, the student isn't sort of seeing this in real time, they're nonetheless debriefing or reflecting on it with a counselor where the-
Exactly, assessing their growth.
Generated the data.
Exactly, feeling like the success of that implementation. And then also being able to track and help students change trajectory and differences if they've tried certain strategies and they feel a better response to one versus the other as they practice skill sets. You're interacting with the student to help them learn to do that self-monitoring piece and be responsive to what helps them make progress. And one of the things I think we've done in the past on Sherri's teams is that the faculty have done a very good job helping students see and feel that progress work. We didn't do as good a job tracking it ourselves to be able to then, so adding the progress monitoring really deepens our ability to then look for patterns.
I, I know it seems like a specific question, but I asked it to sort of get at the sort of best practices that, that are being implemented because I know as a student, this is precisely the kind of evidence that's going to, to speak volumes to students, learners, when they're sort of ready to learn from it. And then one other, if you could go a few slides back to the Tier One, Two, and Three, I had a, a question about that. So I noticed that social emotional is at the bottom. In your opinion, would it be that social emotional is intentionally and deliberately at the bottom because it provides such an important foundation that if students are in a good place socially and emotionally, that the behavior can't really come together?
In, in my opinion, yes. Because if, if students aren't in a well place from a social emotional standpoint, then, you know, being able to access instruction becomes very difficult, very difficult.
Sarah, any comments, questions?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
Please, please.
Sarah?
So I also have tons of questions, but I'm probably going to, you know, email you all and, and after. I'll start, maybe I'll just ask one of, or two of my questions right now. One of them would be, do you have an assessment percentage-wise, let's say if we're looking at the high school? When you're looking at this particular slide that we're looking at right now, I understand that it's clear that we've got the most in Tier One and then Tier Two and Tier Three, but what is percentage-wise, how are they falling? Like you have solid percentages of, of, of what percentage of students are falling into each tier? And also when we say intensive support or targeted support, I assume universal support is sort of in the classroom, but I, that's an assumption I'm making. I just want to understand what kind of resources does it require to service students in Tier Two, but specifically Tier Three? So it's sort of a multiple question.
That's a great question. So Tier One, and I certainly have sort of like the state benchmark model that I can share with you. I mean, I think it's a work in progress for us. You can see that right now, at least 22% of our students, you know, who are in Tier Three, you know, we're looking to move them down to Tier Two and Tier One, right? It's kind of like trying to flip the model a little bit, but I can get the exact percentages. You know, I think it's a range of like five, you know, like the majority should be in Tier One, right? And then as we move into Tier Two, like the available supports, it depends on what track we're on, whether it's, you know, counseling or social emotional clinical support. It might be an individual group with a counselor, it could be a social skills group. And likewise academically, you know, we might pull a student out if they need more targeted instruction, you know, in math, you know, to help them with a concept or if that's impeding them from accessing the curriculum. You know, we would do that and we're trying to be more flexible and intentional about being flexible and, and being able to do that.
And Tier Two and Tier Three also might be short cycles of support. I mean, when you're really looking at Tier Two, the idea is that you're closing a gap or you're reinforcing skills or you're building a skill academically or emotionally and that you then be able to cycle those students back into their regular classroom setting, reinforced with what they need to continue progress. You'll have kids that'll move through, I think by the time you get into Tier Three support, you've probably got some stable aspects of what's regular in your schedule and you might be receiving Tier Two in your classroom. So there's a range of things. It's very fluid. But to the question around percentages, can I just clarify?
Yeah.
So you want to understand, say typically at the high school-
Yeah.
You know, the vast majority of the 1,200, roughly 1,200 kids at the high school fall in Tier One. And then you've got students that move in and out of Tier Two and Tier Three. You said 20%, Sherri, 22%?
I think that's high. We, we did present the numbers earlier before the, both of you were on the school committee and I just don't have them at the top of mind. You know, Kim gave them to us. I don't want to go on record-
Yeah.
But other than saying, I think 20% is high.
Yeah, I was speaking for district, not just-
Oh, okay, district. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That, that would-
But we do have the numbers-
We can do the breakdown.
Not committed to memory. So let's, let's get them to you.
And as a follow-up sort of to that question, one thing that Amber was mentioning, and I guess it's also sort of me understanding, because now based on what she said, it sounds like Tier One encompasses the entire school, uh, student body where everybody would sort of fall into Tier One. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So if that's the case, I also, I know all of these things are coupled together. I'm looking at multiple charts and on one of the charts, you know, we're looking at social, social or emotional you have as a category, which is quite a large category in one of the charts I saw. I would, wanted to try and understand, you know, to what degree do we have the support in classroom for, so I know we've been, you know, maxed out in terms of our resources for those students that we're sending out of district. Okay? And we do have social, we have emotional students being sent out of district as well, correct? I mean technically according to the chart. So I'm trying to understand just the economics of it a little bit because I understand that out of district placement is going to be extremely, you know, costly or, or it is per student, correct? I mean relatively, I would say, than to keep the child in district. So I'm trying to understand if there's been any attempts made for, you know, trainings or bringing in more people in district to try and address the needs. And I'm sure this has been looked at, but just to understand what the cost benefit analysis is there, especially given this, the 14% increase that we're looking at for next year. And I, I don't know if that's across the board, if that's just for out of district, but trying to understand if the attempts or if there's been any, any work for that, that's been conducted.
Yeah, I would, I would just say, and then Karen, you can feel free to chime in too. I mean, I think that's what causes us to shift and think about our models differently. So hence the development of the therapeutic model, particularly at Mill Pond, Gibbons, and the high school. So we would, you know, shift staff to be centered on a program model that then parallels, replicates what the student would get in and out of district if we're thinking just about the therapeutic or emotional, you know, the students that might require emotional-
Well, I'm actually, I was saying that, but along with all the others as well. So it doesn't just have to be the emotional piece, but I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that's what we're constantly like looking at our numbers, understanding what our population is and what the demands are and then shifting our practice accordingly. And then there are times when it is warranted that, you know, certainly the student would benefit from short-term out of district placement. It's always our hope and typically is that they return to us, you know, in a short-
Yeah, we, our, our whole core philosophy is that Westboro students should have the opportunity to thrive in their homeschool community and that we can build robust programs to support the full range of student needs and to work with families to make sure that they're going to get their school-based experience with the embedded supports they need in a school-based therapeutic program where they can still flow into their school day. And then you've also got the ability to have those people that you hire in district also serve your district. So, you know, our paraeducators who are working in all of our classrooms enhance the learning of every child in the district as they work in classrooms. And similarly, our special educators embedded in co-teaching models and inclusive visits into classrooms and co-teaching enhance the learning of all students as well as then the targeted support they can provide to students who need it. So we're always working from that premise. I mean, Sherri's whole fundamental design is to provide in district programming and to make sure that it's robust and high quality so that families feel that they get the best, the best of both options, being in your community and having the talented staff you need to provide for your child's needs.
And I think another important kind of piece to know that often can delineate between how well a student might be able to be supported therapeutically in district versus out is in addition to having the resources to the professionals and the educators that are going to be able to support that student, there are often environmental conditions that can be very complex to replicate in a public school setting that some of the added districts offer. So as an example, for a student that is experiencing severe anxiety, to walk through the door of a school with 1,200 students milling about in a foyer, moving to classes can be incredibly different than entering a school with 30 students who, in a quiet environment who are maybe already be in their classes. So there are some times that students need a change of environment and need a change of environmental conditions in order to stabilize to the extent that they can then transition back into district with the, the changes that our environment, you know? So, and, and that can be highly individualized for each and every student as well. You can't make any blanket statements across each of the student's individual needs around that. So there's no, there's a number of factors for sure that contribute to having to make the decision that the student may warrant more than what can be currently provided. But we have, I think we have a good track record of being able to transition students back because they've met with the progress and the success to do so.
So let me bring us back-
So let me bring us back for a second, because I could bring the fall, I got the fall data here. So our ninth graders, just to give you, I mean, I think since we're having the discussion, rather than circle back privately, it'd be good to have it. In terms of depression, ninth graders, 86% were in the normal range this fall. Moderate was 11% and severe 2%. And then there's an anxiety indicator too, and it's pretty similar. And the percentage went down by 10 percentage points or 10% post COVID. It was a 10% bump, it was higher last year. So this year went down by, I guess, yeah, the percent of students in moderate or severe went down by 10%. So our normal, in any case, so that's, it's like 15% are spread, put on our radar this fall.
So it does definitely fall out in a tiered kind of percentage, which is nice. And again, we track that.
Akub?
Yes, thank you. First of all, thank you very much for the report. I really appreciate it. Learned a lot. Have a few questions. One is, your data starts at 2020 or 21. I'm curious if you could speak to a little bit about how the services have changed since before COVID. Have you seen impact of COVID and is it going away? If it has been noticeable in your data or not, then I'll get to the other question.
Yeah, I'm always hesitant to give COVID credit for anything. But certainly we've noticed the increase like in the emotional, the emotional significance, I think, of what we might be able to define as some of the fallout of COVID. But I think if you look at Metro, the Metro West health data and screenings, like we were on a trajectory to see that increase over time. So again, like I don't know yet how we validate what role COVID played in that. But certainly here, you know, we've seen an uptick in students applying therapeutic interventions.
On the opposite side of that, there are many student profiles that I think we would have all speculated could have been so significantly impacted and experienced enormous regression as a result that quite honestly showed incredible resiliency and were able to come back with little impact, you know. And so there's been interesting, I don't want to use the word success, but interesting that it didn't impact them in the way that we might have speculated beforehand that it would. So I think for every, you know, complicated side of COVID, there's some odd successes. Not that any of us want to do this over again, but you know, there are both, both sides of the story for sure.
It'll take years to tap that data out of cycle in terms of impacts. I mean, the senior class, you know, the vast majority of their whole experience was within a trajectory of intense COVID and recovery COVID. And so there's a whole myriad of impacts from that. You know, lost opportunities, new learning that we saw in their resilience and capacity to reinvent themselves as learners in different ways. And then the return to being in very high demand community environments and the impact on that. And so, you know, I think it won't be, and it'll probably be another two years before we see that cycle start to close out where you're literally tracking differences in behavior and performance based upon the impact for all students, regardless of students with more complex needs. We're just talking about all of our students in general.
Okay, my second question is, well Karen, I heard you loud and clear about the challenges with the transportation. It sounds like there's no light at the end of the tunnel. So what are your plans for next year? You know, we have an increased need for the out of district transportation. I mean, have you thought about, or maybe you already have worked with other towns, nearby towns, maybe offer transportations together to the same facilities outside of district?
Yeah, so the way our out of district transportation works is we currently have a contract through a collaborative that then has a vendor they use for transportation. So our neighboring towns are all part of that same contract. And so already, when I have a student from Westboro that needs to get to a certain school, if there's a student in Northboro or there's a student in Shrewsbury who also goes to that school, the transportation company is already routing them together. So for that reason, having a collaborative kind of problem solving relationship with other districts hasn't necessarily kind of yielded any success. In terms of what's the plan for the future? The cycle of transportation is that typically at the end of May, we're submitting kind of, it's clean slate. All routes get rerouted for summer and they get rerouted for the next school year. So we'll be submitting our transportation request for any student of ours that is attending extended school year through the summer. And then we also submit transportation requests for the 23, 24 school year. So I am using a lot of my energy to remain in a cautiously optimistic place that the clean slate may renew and we may be able to get into a better place. I think we went into last summer with those beliefs and things shifted pretty quickly. So we're gonna have to see, because what doesn't appear to have changed is the driver shortage. So until, you know, these companies aren't lacking the vehicles. They're lacking the folks that are qualified and licensed to drive them. And that is not isolated to our company. It's, you know, ours meaning the company we've contracted with. It's every, every school-based transportation company. I can call up other companies and be, have them answering me the same way. We can't do that route, we don't have enough drivers. So it's not as if, I'm hearing David and I have had no shortage of conversations on this topic and there has been some feedback that maybe some other districts are faring a little bit better. So I think we're trying to learn more about that and unpack that a bit more in terms of why that may be. So more to learn there for sure. But cautiously optimistic that the renewal of the kind of cycle of transportation routing and requesting maybe will yield some improvements, we'll see.
Some of the driver shortage appears to be some related to the state law requirement for the drivers themselves, where they need a commercial driver's license to go along with this, which is not necessarily a need that school districts would have. So that might be another place where we can get some purchase.
Yeah, there's two sets of licensure. So if you're providing any school-based transportation, so the big yellow bus drivers, there's a certain license for that. And then there's what's called the 7D license, which is the drivers that typically drive out of district students, because they're not driving the big yellow buses, they're driving most commonly vans. And that's the 7D license, and that's always existed. So what, you know, what happens is the companies, they have several layers to their training process and they can get somebody through the seven layers and then the person can't answer the 12 questions on the 7D test. Or they couldn't pass the corrigatory. And there's a range of, so they're, they're reporting to us anyway, because we've had a number of meetings, that the applicants, not that they're getting a robust amount of applicants, but they're getting applicants, but after all the layers of training, vetting and all of that take place, then there's maybe two that are hireable. And so they're continuing to face the challenge of having to have enough drivers to meet the routing. So, and that impact comes back to us.
We're gonna continue to look at options, just to keep us, you know, moving on this. It's a whole separate topic in and of itself. But I do think that we'll continue to develop some creative options that would be hopefully available by the fall. And we'll talk more about that as we see if we can bring that forward.
Actually, are you finished? I want to give Eritrika a chance to speak, I know she has to leave shortly. So I don't know if you have any questions or comments from the students.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, like, on the student side, I feel like I've seen an increase in, I mean, I can only speak towards the high school right now, that a significant increase in like people, not the number of resources, but that people actually know about the resources that we do have at the school. I think the counseling department has done a good job in like informing students what their options are. And that's been really nice to see, because we've seen more enrollments for NHS peer tutors and other programs like peer mediators at our school. And those are kind of solutions that we can just work with in our school district. I know like a lot of the, I tutor some students and a lot of my friends who tutor other students, like we've seen kids like quite literally increase like two letter grades just having the time to like sit down and focus after school. So, yeah, I just wanted to say, I've definitely seen like a positive increase in that sense at the high school.
Thank you. Thank you. So I just want to say, I've seen this presentation many times, so thank you. But I do enjoy the addition of the data on the staff. I think that's a really important piece to this. So that's like, you know, rounding it out a little bit more to see what it takes to provide all these services. And then, you know, the focus on transportation, just explaining the complexity, and you just have scratched the surface, I know. But it's important for folks to know how complex that is. And then layering in the information on the homeless students and that transitory kind of atmosphere for all. You know, we see it from our side in terms of like administrative or placing them, but I just think about those students and their families and what they're going through. And you talk about students who are available to learn. And if they're able to enter, you know, whether it's a second grade classroom or a high school English classroom where the teacher is warm and welcoming and checks in with them and the students know how to greet a new student, they've already learned all those social emotional skills. It just makes for a better environment for everyone. And then also just thinking about the tiers, I mean, I do think about it as every student is in tier one, like everybody, because everybody gets all those supports. So not just social emotional, but academic. So, you know, I know we focus a lot on mental health and the social emotional supports because they're often tied in with behavioral. But you're doing all of this sort of tier swapping for students with their math, their English, their communication skills, like everything, so they can get exactly what they need. But like Amber said, it's not always that you're in this like sub-separate math program for the whole school year. You might be there just for the geometry unit, because that's what's really, you know, something that's hard for your brain to wrap around. So I just think it's interesting to think about how, well, it's just how complex the work is that you do. So, thank you.
Yes, everybody has covered most of everything that I would think of, but I do have one question for you, and that's the DESI review for next year. Can you comment on that and how you're preparing, I guess, to deal with that?
Yes, actually, Daniel and I are preparing for that. Daniel takes on the civil rights side and I do the special education. And it's a self-assessment process now, so it really is, it feels, it's a lot of work, but it feels less like a sort of gotcha, if you will. It's very reflective work and it's work that Daniel and I are front-loading this year. And I've held the work away from my team, because I want them to do this work. But it's just a lot of like research of documents, you know, wanting to know like CPAC and sort of the format for CPAC and like all of the procedural documents that are related to regulation and to special education. And they rotate the cycle, the mid-year is more focused on that. And then, you know, when they do their full review, they'll come out and they'll look further at our programs and they'll review student records, et cetera. So it kind of shifts depending on what cycle and rotation you're in. So we're in the process of submitting our self-assessment and DESI will inform us in August when they'll be visiting next year and what exactly they want to see based on, you know, their findings. So we do a lot of reflection around, you know, just self-practice and where we think we are. And we also can identify our own areas of improvement for DESI, so.
Very good, thank you. For that, thank you very much.
Thank you, very, very much. Because the, I'm just gonna look at our agenda here for a second, because last time I was jumping around on the agenda and the chair had to remind me.
For recognition.
Karen, if you guys can just sit and relax while we do one or two other pieces, but then I might need some help on the other, you'll stay, yeah, we won't be long. So I guess the agenda comes to me, and one of the things we try to make sure we're doing is celebrating and holding up the quality of work that our people in the district are doing beyond just their teaching and learning with our students. And so I just wanted to do two recognitions tonight. I've been trying to do more academic recognitions for you and showing you samplings of things to celebrate throughout the district. Tonight, I wanted to acknowledge two of our colleagues who I think have received really important honors. First, I want to open up that document, just because. Johanna DeCarlo, our athletic director, has been with us, I believe, the last 15 years. Johanna received the Athletic Director of the Year two weeks ago at their event. It is quite an accomplishment to be recognized out of all the athletic directors across the state. And I just want to acknowledge my respect for the work that Johanna does. Being an athletic director is amazingly always controversial, always complex, never loved. Truthfully, everyone laughs, but you know, Johanna and I would know that at any given time, the parent voice often is that, you know, they would take someone else. Because it's a hard job to have what we know is the joy of athletics and the way that parents feel and want those experiences for their children. And lots of opinions, as we all have, I was a parent of an athlete as well, I'm two of them. Lots of opinions whenever your coach is behaving certain ways and things are being played out certain ways. And the bussing schedule, which she has had to survive through COVID, which has just been so awful. The playing schedules, when they play, everything about being an AD is controversial and no one's ever happy. I just want to acknowledge that I believe that Johanna has always functioned with this district with a complete focus on what students need to try to provide excellence of equitable experience for all of them. She's developed amazing programs for us, she's started sports, she's redone fields to make sure that we have equitable service across all of our sports. She cares about kids. I watch her on the ground with kids and see the relationship she has and the way she works up close with students to draw from their opinions. I have immense respect for her. And I just want to acknowledge that I also know and acknowledge the feelings that parents and students and people have in sports have are always real. And that is your experience and that is a truth. But I want to acknowledge the professionalism with which I have watched Johanna over my nine years here and have immense respect for the work that she does. She often says, and we talk about the fact that we respect our players, we have trust in them. We know when we go somewhere that Westboro students are going to be respectful, they're going to be really competitive, they are going to be good teammates, and I'm never worried when they're on the road. And that comes from the culture she's built around the expectation of excellence, both in how we behave and how we live the sport. I believe we have the best fans around. They are a joy to take anywhere and people comment constantly to us about what an enjoyable opportunity is to come to Westboro to play sports and what a joy it is for our teams to be in other settings, because they're respectful to and supportive of the refs and of their teammates and of their competitors. That doesn't happen by accident, it happens from families working with us, even when they are, you know, in a differing opinion about the coach or the playing time or all of those things, or how Johanna handles something. I just respect that the whole process is about humans and people wanting to do things they care about. And she's in the thick of that all the time. She respects sports immensely and is highly competitive, while she also knows that the experience of being on a team is really what your memories are going to be built about. I just want to give a shout out to her for this recognition and am honored to work with her and want to say congratulations. The other acknowledgement that I want to provide is to let Daniel provide a highlight on Casey Cullen and a Fulbright.
Sure, so Casey Cullen, for those, some of you may know, he's a teacher in our social studies department at the high school. And there's, you have a memo that you could look at that has some description of these three significant achievements that he's gotten. So it's sort of like a hat trick we're bringing you of, he both, he earned a Fulbright. He also has, working as a participant on a grant with the Library of. a hat trick we're bringing you of, um, he both, he earned a Fulbright. He also, um, has, working as a participant on a grant with the Library of Congress and he was appointed to a state commission. And so each of those are achievements in and of themselves. The Fulbright, um, I'm sure you're all familiar with the Fulbright organization. There's a, they have a global classrooms program and, um, Fulbright is known for creating connections across communities across the world. And, um, as part of, um, being recognized, uh, he will be traveling with a delegation to India in July of, uh, this summer. Um, he said he, he's not a fan of flying, but he'll be fine once he gets there, is what he told me. The Library of Congress grant that he's working on, um, is a, a project that is helping to make the Library of Congress, um, resources more available to students who are English language learners. And so, um, Casey, uh, has gone down to the Library of Congress and done a presentation down there. Um, and he's, you know, actively working on that project. So the third achievement has to do with celebrating in July of 2026. It's going to be the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution. And he was appointed as the only teacher to be on this commission, a special commission of, that the state of Massachusetts has put together to work on the celebration. So he's working, he'll be working actively for, you know, the next couple of years on, um, helping make that celebration be dynamic. So those are his three accomplishments.
I, I just want to again acknowledge that this is, um, your full-time teaching job is a lot of work. And when you see people step up to be coaches and club leaders and leaders around these projects, um, it's, it's really, uh, just important to acknowledge that's a lot encompassed in your daily experiences.
Uh, I think Ashwika has something to share about Mr. Cullen.
Yeah. No, I wanted to say I've been lucky enough to take two classes with Mr. Cullen this year. And he's been one of my favorite teachers that I've ever had. And I know that several students across Westboro High School echo that same message of gratitude. And Mr. Cullen really just has a unique ability to make the classroom like a fun and exciting place where you know that when you're going there for civic education, you're being taught by someone who genuinely cares and is actively expanding the role that civic education plays, not only just for Westboro High School students, but for students all across the state. It's been a highlight of my senior, um, year to take a class with him and, um, for so many other students. And it's really nice to see that all of his talents are getting the recognition that they deserve. So on behalf of the students, I just wanted to say congrats to Mr. Cullen and thank you for everything.
I'm sure we all have had, um, teachers in our lifetime that we remember forever. And, uh, it is really a blessing to have the opportunity to be able to say that about a teacher in, in your experience so far. And certainly I remember the few that I had that were extraordinary, uh, both in history, uh, and, uh, and in English. Although I didn't perform as well as they'd like, but certainly I do remember, uh, very good teachers, um, and, uh, they, they will live with you forever, just as they have with me.
You'll want to look at the memos that we provided for you, both on Johanna and Casey. I think, um, the other thing in noting Casey, I really didn't even note about Johanna is the amount of work she does at the state level. Um, and district level has been really immense. Um, and she serves on multiple boards. And it's all in, in the memo that they shared with you. But again, it puts Westboro on the map in a lot of ways, in ways that, you know, people always talk about having our identity both in district be strong, but out in the community and beyond. And, uh, Johanna and Brian both, um, just presented a conference, uh, and they've served on multiple boards related to the, the regulations and guidance of all of the sports, um, tournament structures and expectations. And it's just, um, incredibly validating to see our identity out there serving the broader work. So shout out to both of them.
I just want to mention Casey. I don't know if I missed it, if it's in here, but he's a high, he's a Westboro High School grad as well. So that's super exciting.
Always a Ranger. That's right. Yeah. Daniel and I were at a workshop today and then one of the nurses embedded in the conference, she goes, I'm a Ranger. I was like, we were both, she graduated in 2005 and she's now a nurse and works at Aspavelli Collaborative with Intensive Need Students. And so our Rangers are everywhere. Um, are you ready to transition?
Yes.
All right. So, um, the next, uh, the last major agenda item for tonight is just an update. We have been working steadily on the emergency sheltering issues. And I want to frame this conversation. I'm going to walk you through the letter that I'd like to submit. And then Karen is going to come to the table and just enhance answering any questions you have as I step you through this. I want to begin by just prefacing this importantly by the fact that there is a state crisis. Exclusively probably a national housing crisis, but we are definitely feeling it here in this state. And we want to always be in a place where we're with empathy, welcome and support. And I want to give an immense shout out to the Westboro faculty and to Karen for the incredible work that has gone into Donna Latraverse, who has been working with Karen to go to the hotel settings and to get transportation arranged for other families to come up to the offices so we can work through registration. Um, at the building level, we have been working very quickly to get students plugged in to both support services and classroom life. Um, and to make them feel a sense of community after suffering the trauma of transitions. So Westboro remains a place that cares about any student who comes here, getting the experience they deserve and the schooling that they require. That said, this is about appropriate, um, shared responsibility. And that's what I want to talk about as we look at the letter that I'm going to provide. First, a little data. Um, Karen has worked tirelessly to, um, onboard families to identify who's in the hotels, to work with DHCD and SMOC to ask hard questions. I attend a, every other week, meeting in a Zoom with lots of people from the state level, pushing on things, answering questions and trying to do coordination of service. Currently, I would say together, the things we want to highlight, um, when families join us, they're being placed by SMOC, DHCD, and some families are, um, individually placing themselves. So there's a complexity of layers.
Yeah. So sometimes families will, what we kind of call self-place, meaning they've entered into a situation where they haven't been able to remain in their stabilized housing. They have an income source and they may choose to stay in one of the extended stay models, for instance, until they can restabilize and, and go back to secure housing. But the vast majority of the families that we're seeing, um, are going to the state because they are without the means to maintain safe and appropriate shelter. They don't have the income resources to secure new and safe shelter. And therefore they're going to the state to get assistance. And in turn, the state is using, here in Westboro, three of the extended stays to do that.
And given the crisis of the escalation of numbers, both families in Massachusetts losing housing and families coming to Massachusetts, some from out of the United States and then some from within the United States who've had some, um, purposeful reason that getting to this area has brought them here. But they still do not have the housing they require. So you have a couple of pieces.
Something to note that is a pretty significant shift for this year is historically, um, as I've done this role, uh, in my time here in Westboro, most cases, these families were coming from within Massachusetts, had lost their home in another community and were either placed or came to Westboro and to the model. The absolute difference this year is that's the rarity. What we're seeing now is families that are coming into Massachusetts either from out of the country directly or by way of another state, having come from out of the country. So that's a pretty significant shift for us, compared to historically. Um, so besides a, a significant increase in numbers, that profile has changed pretty significantly.
So typically over the years, we would have, you know, over the last five years, one, five, seven, four. You know, you've got families, that's kind of the range of homelessness that is always embedded in the district that you're working on supporting. Uh, we saw an escalation of that in 21 and 22, uh, as this was beginning to ramp up with about 17, um, school-aged children. And now currently the impact on the district as the hotel-based families are, um, queuing up is that we have 21 students, um, currently attending Westboro Public Schools. Of those students, um, about, and I have the data in the letter that we're going to share, looked at the fact that-
I have it in front of me as well, if it's easier for me to-
Yeah, you go. You go. It's your data.
Yeah, no, it's okay. Um, so what is also interesting to note is, uh, as Amber just referenced, some of the numbers passed. Like even in 2021, 22, when we had 17 families, 10 of those children, when I say families, 17 children, 10 of those children were across three families alone. So we had families with several children that were coming in. What's also been interesting is most of these families that are coming to us have just one school-aged child. So we're seeing actually 21 separate, you know, families in most cases. There's a, maybe a couple of families that there's one other sibling, but that's also an interesting change. So it's not as if we can say this 21 is across, you know, just 10 families or five families. So right now, um, and I file this with the caveat that this number quite literally changes from morning to afternoon and can even change from day to day, but we are sitting roughly at about 21 students. Right now there are 39 children that are placed here by the Department of Housing and Community Development and residing here in Westboro, 29, uh, 39 school-aged children. Many of those children are continuing to be bused to their school of origin. So we are not registering them or educating them here in Westboro, but 21 of them, we are. 15 of them are then residing here in Westboro and attending one of our schools based on their age. And six of them are residing elsewhere, but still have entitlement to remain here in Westboro as a student under McKinney-Vento. McKinney-Vento allows for the scenario, even if a student is able, the family is able to stabilize in housing, if that is at any point during the school year, the student is allowed to finish the school year before they would be expected to change to their new district.
So as we look at these numbers, roughly 47% of those students require, um, uh, language support. And roughly 40% of them require IEP services. So high impact in the layers of additional service providers into that immediately kind of tiered support model. Um, you also have, you know, layers of transitional trauma just because of you uproot young children. And many of these are across our elementary schools. You, you really get into a complexity of kids who have been, you know, moved, uh, without a plan and now are dropping into new school settings and it might be their third school. So they don't, they're not going to move quickly to bond and belong because they assume they're moving again. So lots of, you know, complexities here. Tonight, what we wanted to do is just give you the, the, the physical update on the impact. I think the layers, and this is what I've been trying to make clear to the state, is that Karen's time is currently at about 60% going to this layer. You've got Donna's time equal to that on a daily basis. And they had full days before this doing work of the district. You now have, you know, about 15 students dropping into IEP service delivery when we already had stabilized caseloads that were full. And so, and L service delivery. So again, like the impact at the building level is, is, this is why I've been clear with the state. And my next point is we want to welcome support and, um, and educate all of these families. And there's a capacity we own as a small to moderately medium-sized district. And that's what I want to talk about tonight. And I want to transition to the letter. Before I do that, do you have any questions around the numbers or anything for Karen? I mean, she'll sit here and participate, but I want to talk about the purpose of the parameters that we want to reach out to the state level on and reiterate our concerns about them overtaxing our community.
I have some concerns about, you know, where we are relative to this process. I mean, we certainly didn't ask for it, uh, but it is occurring not only for us, but for, I think it was, um, 16 towns. Um, and obviously the legislature has reacted to this public need in the way they have. We really can't say no because it's going to happen however the legislature sets it. So, you know, rather than go, go into the details of, of this, because I think it's obvious that this is an impact for the school system as well as for the town as a whole in terms of other services need. I think the, the focus of this discussion should be, given the parameters of, of what's there and the problems we have, how are we going to deal with that? Because the only real solution for us is to deal with it and ask for the money that it takes to support it. And so, um, obviously we can, we can, um, put together our, um, reps and senators to at least focus our concern at the legislative level. But I think the practical response to this is, okay, state, if you are going to require us to deal with these things and all these issues under state law, uh, and in terms of moving kids to their homeschool system and so on, what can they do for us? And how are we going to, um, focus, I guess, our resources on the legislature to react to that? And clearly if, I think it was in this morning's Globe, was the, an article on this impact in Concord. And so, uh, obviously the other towns are waking up to this need. And I think the, the letter that you put before us tonight that was presented to the, um, Board of Selectmen last night and obviously before us tonight is what our focus should be.
Yes, I definitely-
I don't really see much purpose in, I guess, enumerating the disaster that this is for us because we already know.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, I don't want to drag you through that either. And I don't want to belabor it because it feels like then we're, you know, speaking about the families right here. But I do want you to understand the impact because before I send a letter to the governor, I want you to understand that in signing this, the reasons why and the impact that it has. And I think for me, this is about, um, equity and about shared responsibility and about, um, capacity. Because I don't want more money and more support. I want limits. And that's, I mean, I'd like money too, but the bottom line is they're not going to pay our per pupil expenditure here. Like there's all sorts of layers here that have complexities. And they'll, they can't even get us busing transportation related to the issues we already heard around students we have currently, as well as the fact that we're in the last quarter of our year and our staff is hired. And by the time we would try to post and hire for more people, the year will be over and those kids might have come and gone. So the complexities of what it is, I need you to understand, hence dragging you through it. Because then it's why it has to be a limit. Because the responsiveness can't be like, sure, hire a teacher. Because it doesn't work that way. They're spread across schools, they're spread across grades. It's a transient plan model that they're coming and going. The only way for each community to appropriately do the job they need to do while also serving the students that are already here is to have a limit. And they haven't committed on any level to recognizing capacity formula based upon the size and resources of communities. And that's where we're pushing. To be clear, we will take the moral responsibilities of our community and do good work. And if we have 20 students, we'll adjust and we'll fold. But if you're going to then open the Sharp Building and then backfill the hotels, you've outstripped the capacity of a small community with a volunteer food bank. And we've just spent the last five years establishing appropriate class sizes for the population that exists in Westboro and have invested a huge amount of money in that. So for me, it's about forcing the reality of the picture on our legislators to be clear that this is a shared responsibility. It makes complete sense for them to consolidate their resources because it helps them. The state benefits from consolidation because they can send their people to a place, but it doesn't work for the community. And therefore they have got to hear that we need limits. It also creates strands of difficulty that it impacts community that our hotels aren't available for our businesses. That's not our piece to carry. So to your point, Steve, I, I totally agree with you. And I believe that the importance of this letter is to be clear that there's a capacity and that they need to understand the impact and set some capacity limits. We are asking them not to backfill those hotels when they open up the Sharp Building. It's a very concrete request and it's reasonable and that they need to-
And I think it should be asked and it should be, uh, presented in the way- And I think it should be asked, and it should be presented in the way that you just explained it. Having sat, at least at this table for a number of years, there's only one way that we get the recognition of our problem. And I think the letter that's presented to us, number one, creates the list of issues. Certainly, your parallel letter associated with the impact on the school system and our ability to provide the required service is another. But ultimately, it's having all these 16 towns and their reps and senators reacting to this for what's fair.
Exactly.
Because where they are now, that is, the legislature and their reaction, is an emergency reaction without care for what the impacts are.
I agree.
And so at this point, I guess this is, as you mentioned earlier, the U.S. Revolution of 1776, this could be the revolution of 2023, in the sense that we just can't do everything in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. There has to be an effort to make things fair.
I agree. So-
Unfortunately, we have the four hotels, and so it could be as bad as four hotels plus the Sharp Building.
I was very clear with the committee when I met with them, this group of people, and I've been very forceful on this. They drove by a lot of communities to bus students out here and to place these families in hotels out here, and they drove by a lot of hotels to do that. And therefore, the shared responsibility of multiple communities, recognizing that the state is in a crisis, is a legislature issue that has to be empowered, and our lobby needs to step up and represent our constituency in our communities. And again, I started very appropriately with the important message that we care and welcome for all families, and we have done excellent work with these families, and we are happy to have them. And I want a cap. And that's where we need to be clear and resonate together about what our needs are and our expectations. And so the-
May I add some of the pieces to this that I think are really also advocacy for these children? Because they drove by other communities, we have young children, first and second graders, that are being bused back to their school of origin into Boston from Westboro daily. That's an incredibly intensive bus ride for a young child to start their school day and have to leave, you know, very early to get into Boston at school.
Well, you know, I understand that, and that is not anything we can do, anything about. I certainly understand the pressure on these kids to do it. And in fact, the argument is to the legislature, why do you do that to kids?
Right, right.
We cannot deal with what state law tells us we have to do. And I think it's the most ridiculous thing that we would truck kids from this school system back to Boston, where it costs $30,000 a kid, and some of whom can't even graduate with being able to read and write. So most of this doesn't make any sense, other than the fact that the state's issue is to try to take care of these families. And I don't have a problem with that. But I do think that we need to focus on what the impacts are to us and use the tools that we have, which is our reps and senators, to deal with this at a level in Boston, where people with intelligence can react to it properly. I understand everything you presented, because that's the reason why this is a concern.
Exactly. So-
The tools are not at this table. The tools are with the people that we have elected and put in place, and we know that Kate Donahue and Hannah Kane are working for our benefit. And I'm sure we can mobilize the rest of the reps and senators in the towns that are affected, just like we are.
Well, I certainly think that's the direction of the work, and therefore where the work lies. And that's why the letter's here. So I hope that you will be comfortable signing it and joining the-
I'm ready.
-select board. It's right up here, and we'll sign it at the end of the meeting. And I think it's important that, I appreciated the quality of this discussion and recognize that it's, this isn't about those families. We need to get all of these families what they need, shared across the Commonwealth. So I welcome the conversations, and I have a lot of faith in our reps.
And I had my two cents here. Why don't we ask the rest of the committee for theirs?
Yeah, I certainly support the letter, and I'm happy to sign it. If anything, I think it's not emphatic enough. I've not written a letter to Governor Healy before. I have written letters to governors, and I'm, my letters have not been as diplomatic as this. In fact, you know, reading it, I think the purpose can be drawn out more clearly. The takeaway line is sort of buried here in the second paragraph. Unfortunately, however, state officials have been reluctant to commit to Westboro that they will not backfill these hotels with additional families. That's the crux.
Let me comment on that, though. Remember that this was supported by the Board of Selectmen last night, so we can't rewrite it.
Okay.
We can ask Amber to write the one with the power that we, the school committee, can sign with Amber as the, so-
I can certainly enhance it. I've-
And I'm happy to sign this letter as is. Yeah, absolutely. And, like, that's why I prefaced it. I've not written a letter to Governor Healy, and so, so there's probably a reason for taking that.
Well, I want to give a shout out to Kristi Williams, who framed this as the approach and does a lot of work at that level. And we each added our pieces. And there have been multiple emails, and the messaging has been clarified, and I've certainly been, I would say the word strident potentially. So I will continue to do so. But I appreciate and our signatures complementing the work of the select board here to speak for Westboro.
Yep. Other comments?
I couldn't agree more with you, Steve, about missing this call to action more clearly in the letter. I think we can mention that cap that you are hoping for. I think that that would be more clear message, what we're hoping to achieve. But I'm happy to sign it as well.
Kristen?
Sorry, no.
But we can talk with you, we're almost done, and then we can talk with you afterwards, because we're going to wrap this up in just a minute.
No, I'm happy to sign this. I think it's very well-written. It shows a lot of restraint, professional restraint, which I applaud. And it clearly outlines the issues, not just with the schools, but with public safety, fire EMS, DPW, everybody. It impacts everybody. And I agree that, I know plenty of communities that have extended stay hotels, and obviously those hotels were allowed to say no. Or they, then our hotels happened to say yes. Some of our hotels said yes. So I am all for sharing a burden like this and thinking that, I have no idea why these 16 communities, you know, fell into this category and why we're one of them. Yeah.
Economics.
Yeah, no, I mean, I can't, none of these, right, but none of these towns, I mean, maybe with one, have significant wealth. And none of them are like Metro West, like the, right around Boston, there's no suburbs. They're, you know, so obviously, they have to send those kids out here. I just, it doesn't make sense to me, so I'm hoping that we can get some answers from this letter.
Lots of questions.
Sarah?
No comments, yeah. She's like, I'm all set, it's all been said, yeah.
Okay.
So we will sign it after.
Yeah, I guess I would call for a vote to support the letter offered by Amber and Kristen, and as supported by the Board of Selectmen. I would make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You have a note that we could enter into an executive session tonight, but I do not believe we need one, which is good news. And you should be able to adjourn.
Good. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
There you go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, everybody. Now you can ask all-